Okay, I think the appointed hour is upon us. We had a session, you know, an hour and a half ago with three presenters, and appreciate that, and appreciate the folks that have joined us today to make presentations. We've seen your written statements and really appreciate those and look forward to hearing from you. And Bob will be keeping time. I think we talked about each of you might have 10 minutes, basically, to make any comments you want to make to supplement your written statements or whatever, and then we'll just do that, and then by the time we have left, we'll ask, be able to ask questions from the people over here, of all of you or any one of you. So, I appreciate that. So, we're starting where? Bob? I guess, you know what?
Judge Brown.
Okay. Judge Brown, I want to start with you.
Thank you. It's my honor to be here today, and I want to point out that I'm here as a member of the NCBJ UST Liaison Committee, a committee of the National Conference of Bankruptcy Judges, but it just happens that all of us who signed the statement that was filed happened to be on the NCBJ UST Liaison Committee. I am not speaking for the NCBJ, I'm not speaking for any of our colleagues, I'm not speaking for all bankruptcy judges, or even all bankruptcy judges within the districts that are represented by my statement, but I am here on behalf of myself, bankruptcy judge James Boyd, bankruptcy judge August Landis, Judge Brian Lynch, Charles Rendlin, and Laura Taylor. And we all have the concerns that I've articulated in my statement, and I'd like to just sort of go through generally to give the commission our input, particularly with respect to the quality of practice by consumer debtor attorneys, and the corollary of trying to maintain the authority of the bankruptcy courts and the U.S. Trustee Program to enforce competence and good behavior and sanction incompetence and bad behavior in the courts. So, our first concern is that, as a general rule, the commission consider each possible change that they are looking at in the context of avoiding anything that could further diminish the integrity of the bankruptcy system, and we want to make sure they do protect vulnerable consumer debtors, and maintain the tools that are available in the courts and the U.S. Trustee Program at this time for punishing and sanctioning attorneys who fail to maintain the high level of practice that we think currently exists generally, and which is really integral to the bankruptcy system succeeding. We recognize that, of course, there are some attorneys who are not competent, who are not honest, who lack the appropriate level of decorum in the courtroom, but we start with the premise that most of the debtor attorneys that we see in our courtrooms are competent. They are trying very hard to do a good job, they're conscientiously and zealously representing their clients, and they know the bankruptcy code. And so, I think it's important to recognize that fact and not use too broad a brush or understand my comments as in any way describing the vast majority of attorneys that we see in our courtrooms. But, of course, there are the attorneys who, you know, some might call the bad actors. In my materials, we've attached a couple of cases that we think are particularly important in delineating the pretty outrageous and egregious conduct that we've seen, and I'll just point out the three examples that we've put in the statement, which is, you know, the attorney who was suspended from practice of law with disbarment pending and continued to file bankruptcy cases, then abandoned the cases and kept the fees that he had collected. Or the attorney who collected a filing fee from his client, filed a fee waiver application, and if the fee waiver application was granted, he kept the filing fee. Or the attorney who, in multiple Chapter 13 cases and on multiple occasions, failed to file a motion, I'm sorry, failed to file a response to a motion to dismiss despite the fact that his clients wanted the cases to continue, and were continuing to try to gather the money together to make the payments. I mean, these are the kinds of situations we feel really interfere with the administration of justice and really interfere with a debtor's right to a fresh start, and at the moment we have minimal, but some, tools to deal with that, and we want to make sure that if the commission takes any steps at all to change procedure or to propose changes to procedures, that if possible, they increase the authority of the bankruptcy courts and the U.S. Trustees' Office to deal with this sort of misconduct, and please do not do anything that would diminish our authority, because we all know Section 105, for example, is not the best tool, but often the only tool we have, and I know that that's something that's sometimes a target of criticism. Related to that is the question of remote lawyering, particularly when we're talking about consumer debtors and consumer debtors who are really under enormous stress, not only from financial problems, but often, as you all know, medical issues, mental health issues, insecure employment, mental health issues. These are people who need attorneys who are going to do a good job and who are going to be able to meet with them. And a lot of the remote lawyering we have seen in consumer debtor cases has been less than fully competent and less than fully professional, and I think the materials include a couple of cases where you'll see criticism of firms including, but not limited to, the upright national practice model, and that raises a lot of concerns for the judges and I who have put together this paper, because we acknowledge that in some places it is hard to find a debtor's attorney within your geographic location, but the notion of having the practice encouraged is something that is of concern to us. If it's necessary, if it's the best way, if it's the only way, it may be appropriate, but it needs to be carefully monitored, and I'm very concerned about doing anything that might make that easier. One of the issues that has come up in that regard is the concept of either waiving or diminishing the applicability of local rules. This notion that if there's to be more national lawyering on behalf of consumer debtors, for them it's a hindrance or a burden to have to learn those pesky local rules in every district. You know, I would submit that those local rules are crucial, they reflect the local experience and culture, and they've been drafted, I think, uniformly around the country with the input of the constituents who practice in that district. And it's not hard to read the local rules of a court, and it seems to us that if someone is committed to practicing in more than one district, it's their professional and ethical responsibility to learn and practice according to those local rules. So, we would vehemently oppose any move which would suggest that attorneys should be allowed to practice in districts without having to comply with those local rules. The other piece of that is the attorneys who typically are involved in drafting or revising the local rules are attorneys who are contributing to the court process and the bankruptcy practice generally. You know, these are the attorneys who are taking on pro bono cases, these are the attorneys who are helping when you need to have the massive project of revising the local rules. I mean, they're generally invested in the system, they understand how it works, they understand the history and rationale behind the local rules, and so, that's another factor that I think is important, both in the context of continuing to enforce local rules and also limiting the opportunities where a remote lawyering situation should be deemed There's also some discussion around using more cyber appearances and remote appearances, again, to enable this national practice, and certainly the courts that we all sit in have benefited enormously from technology. I mean, CME CF has changed the way we all practice law and how bankruptcy works, and it's been fabulous. But there is something important about having the attorney there whenever it's possible, and if there are good circumstances that would warrant using a remote appearance, for example, at a 341 meeting, that, of course, will require a lot of technology expenditures, and we want to make sure that this doesn't turn out to be, you know, a mandate without money, that courts have often been strapped financially, and there's also concern about cybersecurity. So, while that may be a great idea, if it's a proposal that this commission decides to undertake, we would ask that it do so sensitively to those two concerns. Our final point was that if there is a push to try to generally improve the caliber of representation and the experience of consumer debtors in bankruptcy cases, many of the courts are suffering because there isn't adequate translation available. And so, if we're going to look at the bigger picture, I think a lot of unrepresented debtors would benefit enormously from improving the quality and scope of translation materials available. And I would just add on one point of my own that came up after the materials went in, which is the question of Section 108 and the lack of clarity around whether it applies in Chapter 13, whether the Chapter 13 debtor is a debtor in possession, because, again, it's one of those things that for a consumer debtor can really drive up the cost of the case if they have to be litigating whether they get certain rights in their Chapter 13 case. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning. I'll admit I'm nervous.
No, B, this is just a conversation with friends.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. So, anyway. My name is Mary Ida Townsend, and I am very grateful for the opportunity to be here today. I am one of three Chapter 13 trustees in the Northern District of Georgia. We all sit in Atlanta, and then we all have a division. I administer approximately 10,000 active cases at this time, and we're dispersing between four and a half and $5 million a month, and we do not administer ongoing mortgage payments. As Judge Brown prefaced, I am appearing today in my own individual capacity. I am the immediate past president of the NACTT, and I'm the current president of the Southeastern Bankruptcy Law Institute, but I am appearing in my individual capacity. That said, I have been talking to my trustee colleagues about what they're seeing nationally as well, so my comments will have that flair to them as well. Of course, I've been asked to focus my comments on my observations as a trustee and what I see out there in the field as far as the debtor's attorneys go. Just as Judge Brown said, first and foremost, I, this is not a debtor attorney bashing at all. I have had the pleasure of working with so many talented debtors' attorneys over the years, and I want to make sure that that's made very clear. You know, Judge Brown said this, but I want to reiterate. I mean, I represented debtors for seven years back in the day, and I have also worked for the mortgage lenders as well, so I've seen it from all sides. These people come into this situation in such dire straits, and these attorneys have such a difficult job. In 36 to 60 months, that is a long time to be dealing with individuals, and then if you have a joint case, you've got both of them calling you and emailing you and texting you these days, so, you know, it really is hard. The reality is that the expectations that a lot of debtors have, they can't fulfill themselves, so that makes it even more difficult for the debtor's attorney to represent them and keep them happy, as they say. So, I did reach out to my colleagues, and I got a lot of really good responses, and you'll see from my written materials that I kind of categorized everything, the good, the adequate, and the unacceptable. I didn't want to use the word ugly. So, I'm not going to go through all of the examples that I have of what the good and the adequate are, but let's talk about the unacceptable for a minute. And I was in the last session, and I heard Judge McCall asking, you know, what percentage do the attorneys fall into of the debtor's counsel? And I think there are a lot of very good lawyers out there. I also think there are a lot of lawyers that are adequate. They're getting cases confirmed, but it may take three tries. They might not be quite as good at communicating with their debtors, and that is the biggest problem we see in Chapter 13 from the Trustee's Office perspective. We get calls all day long and emails all day long from debtors who just can't reach their attorney. I mean, it will get to the point where I will tell them, or my staff attorney will tell them, "You need to get in the car and drive to their office," because these people have mortgage issues, they've got a motion for relief from the state, that sort of thing. They've got hearings coming up, and they are actively participating in their own case, but they hired a lawyer to help them, and that's the whole point. You know, some of these attorneys, they literally don't even conduct the first consultation in person. We talked about remote lawyering, of course, but the main thing is that they're filing skeletal petitions, they don't file a motion to extend, or they don't file the rest of the paperwork at all, and they've taken money up front, and obviously, that's a very real problem. And a lot of these lawyers that are unacceptable, they are basically using their staff to practice law without a license. I cannot tell you, when I'm getting ready for court, I will prep my calendar, and then I don't mind talking to paralegals on the phone at all, I do it every week, but when you're on the phone with a paralegal and an objection confirmation has come up and it needs to be resolved, and the paralegal says, "Oh, okay, I'll go ahead and take care of that, it'll be filed in 10 minutes." Okay, well, that happens to it frequently, and I have to stop and say, "Excuse me, but you need to consult with your employer. You need to talk to the attorney in the office, because you can't practice law without a license." It is a real problem. So, while it's not that difficult to, you know, categorize the good, you know, and the, all the way down to the unacceptable, what do we do about it? And I've been practicing in law, I've been an attorney for 28 years, and I still don't have a good answer to this question, but from talking to my trustee colleagues, I do have a few suggestions of things that we might want to investigate to maybe improve debtor attorney practice overall. First, and I know in the last session there was some conversation about the no-look fee, and my district doesn't have a no-look fee. We have not had one since 2006. We have what I call the free-for-all fee, and it has worked, I have to tell you. I was really worried about it because I thought, "Oh, now I'm going to do is be the debtor attorney police." And to an extent, we are, but we have that responsibility, and the three trustees in Atlanta, we take it very seriously, and if I have a problem with a fee in a case, I email them. I don't file a written objection, because it kind of drives a wedge between the debtor and their attorney. When they get the mail and they're sitting around the coffee table, and they open up their mail and they go, "Oh, my gosh, the trustee says my attorney's been stealing from me," you know, "because this fee's too high." So, we don't do that, but, you know, as we know, the overwhelming majority of the jurisdictions use this no-look fee, and it has worked very well over the years. I worked under that system for many, many years. But maybe we need to relook at the no-look fee structure. Maybe we need to see about, maybe a sort of a reward structure, and it's very difficult to define how that would come about. I think the courts would need to get together and just talk about different ways to analyze debtor attorney performance. Of course, the goal is to incentivize attorneys to consistently excel and simultaneously to discourage the felony attorneys from filing cases. Inadequate attorneys should not be rewarded by receiving the same fee as the good diligent attorneys. This just diminishes the consumer bankruptcy practice as a whole. You know, over the years, I've had many attorneys and some judges say, "You know, it's an open market, the debtor can go anywhere they want, and they can hire any attorney they want." Well, ostensibly, sure. Reality, not so much. You've got to look at it this way. They've probably waited too long to shop around because they're in foreclosure. Georgia's a non-judicial foreclosure state. Your house could be gone, just like that. They've probably, in a lot of cases, never even thought about consulting an attorney at all. They don't know what they're doing, they're not educated in the process. And the reality is that, you know, if you have a lot of money, you can advertise a lot, and you're going to get a lot of clients, and that's fine. There are a lot of good lawyers, debtors' attorneys out there that have big, some place was called the Mills, but they have big practices. I worked at Clark &amp; Washington for several years, and while we didn't get every case right, there are a lot of good lawyers going on there, and they are a very large firm. But the bottom line is, is that, you know, extensive advertising does not equal adequate representation, and that's just the way it is. So, we also want to encourage the courts to maybe get together and, within the judicial system, just talk about how they are adjudicating attorney misconduct, you know, negligence, incompetence, that sort of thing. We encourage them to investigate ways to mandate that these inadequate attorneys either improve or stop filing cases. It's just not good for the system as a whole. And then the third, we trustees, we feel like, and we talk about this a lot amongst ourselves, that we are working really hard to bring these issues to the attention of the court and to the United States trustee. We work very well, generally speaking, with the U.S. Trustee Program, making referrals to them, and we feel like, though, that this really needs to be a collaborative effort to make these improvements. So, to that end, I am recommending that representatives of all of these parties come together and work diligently on a best practices document. This would include, and we could get representatives from NCBJ, NAGBA, NABT, NACTT, and of course, the EO UST to work on this project. I did it previously at the direction of Director White regarding a best practices document for document production from trustees in sevens and thirteens, and it was a very good collaborative process. The debtor's attorneys had asked for us to do that, and we did, and it's, I thought the final product was a really good idea, so that would be a recommendation that we would make. And in closing, thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you. My name is John McMichael, and I'm pleased to provide a statement to the ABI Commission on Consumer Bankruptcy. First and foremost, I am not a practitioner in this area of the law. I was, however, the staff counsel for the Senate Judiciary Committee for most of the time that Congress considered BAPCEP. As such, I would like to share my perspectives on the process for developing bankruptcy policy in Congress. Finally, from a consumer protection perspective, I suggest greater oversight of all stakeholders in the bankruptcy system. The ABI Commission can play a valuable role in vetting bankruptcy policy proposals to assist Congress when or if Congress considers consumer bankruptcy reform. In order to ensure that the commission's work resonates with policymakers, I would suggest that all stakeholders be integrated into the process for developing commission recommendations. I would also point out that, as an overriding principle, Congress prefers predictable legal systems that produce predictable results. Thus, in my view, the commission should be mindful that proposals to create uncertainty would be unlikely to meet with broad support in Congress. In other words, I believe the commission should propose reforms that rely on bright-line rules and standards. When I worked for the Senate, there was a strong perception in Congress that the National Bankruptcy Review Commission had not fully included all points of view. This perception was reinforced by individual commissioners who believed the process had been unfair and slanted, in their view. As a result, many of that commission's proposals were viewed with caution. It would be a mistake and a lost opportunity, in my view, for the ABI Commission to labor long and produce a similar result. At the very beginning of the reform process that led to the enactment of BAPCEP, Congress made a fundamental policy decision to reduce the amount of discretion in bankruptcy. This decision was premised on the belief that a rules-based system is preferable for all participants. Policymakers believe that there was simply too much variation under prior law that resulted in less consistent legal outcomes to the detriment of the U.S. economy. Stated another way, increased discretion correlates to increased variability, and Congress, as I said, tends to prefer legal frameworks that produce predictable results, even if that goal is not achieved perfectly, as was the case with BAPCEP. The evolution of the means test for determining chapter eligibility illustrates this point. Initially, the Senate passed legislation that simply removed certain legal barriers to credit or initiated abuse motions, with little in the way of guidance for judges to evaluate Section 707B. The House of Representatives, on the other hand, passed legislation that provided objective bright-line standards for determining which prospective debtors belonged in a repayment plan. As happens in Congress, the two bodies met at a conference committee and reconciled the two approaches. The Senate agreed to bright-line standards, but also insisted on exceptions. The essence of this conceptual compromise laid the groundwork for the current means test. It became clear to me during the deliberations on bankruptcy reform that all sides of the bankruptcy equation advocate for their narrow parochial interests. Car lenders sought to protect liens on automobiles, credit card companies wanted to decrease losses from customer defaults, student lenders wanted to reduce underwriting risk by preventing the discharge of student loans, and attorneys representing debtors sought to protect fees and reduce legal risk by opposing various proposals related to attorney conduct. For policymakers, creditor interests were fairly straightforward. Creditors seek to ensure repayment and protection of collateral. Debtor interests were less clear at first blush, but became clearer as the process evolved. I believe it is important to understand that, like various creditors, debtor attorneys have parochial self-interests in the policy arena. This notion is not to imply that debtor attorneys are in some way less trustworthy than other participants in the bankruptcy process, merely that policymakers are likely to view them as yet another stakeholder with yet another narrow financial interest. For instance, in the current environment, the growth of third-party financing for attorneys shows how attorneys may seek income in ways that are injurious to clients. When an attorney functionally receives his or her payment from a third party, legitimate questions may arise as to the opacity of financing arrangements. In fact, Congress has examined this issue in hearings and understand legislations being drafted to require greater disclosure of all such financial arrangements. Beginning under the prior administration in 2016, the U.S. Trustee Program seemingly turned more of its attention to protecting consumers and the bankruptcy system from misconduct by debtor attorneys. This follows on a fairly intensive, multi-year effort by the U.S. Trustee Program to police misconduct by creditor attorneys, which was all to the good. I believe, though, that the renewed focus on not just the creditor side of the V, but the debtor side of the V, will be appreciated and supported by at least the people that voted for the BAPCEP legislation. The so-called no-money-down cases from California are another example. According to court documents, in these cases, attorneys offering legal services for consumers failed to follow advertising mandates in BAPCEP, failed to disclose the financial interests of third-party lenders, and failed to disclose income received by clients. As an article in Bloomberg Law noted, "In one case, a client unknowingly paid a lender interest in fees amounting to 40 percent." I would suggest that the failure to disclose such financial relationships is highly inconsistent with consumer protection. The CFPB and consumer groups have routinely criticized hidden fees and expenses and used the legal process to compel transparency. The ABI Commission should consider recommending that all terms and provisions of any agreement used by an attorney that involves factors or other providers of credit be disclosed on a standard form created by the Judicial Conference. The commission should also recommend that Congress ask the GAO to survey the use of factors and other providers of credit to determine the extent of this business practice and to determine whether additional rules should be adopted. As previously mentioned, the monetary sanctions leveled against upright law provide another example of the need for increased consumer protection. In this case, debtors were counseled to engage in sham transactions with a towing company as a result of, I believe, what the Justice Department described as, quote-unquote, "high-pressure sales practices." The judge in that case specifically noted that upright law focused on, quote, "cash flow over professional responsibility," end quote. While this case is on appeal, I believe the comments of the judge are noteworthy. Unfortunately, there ain't, as you probably are aware, there are some instances where attorney self-interest may be driving minority borrowers into Chapter 13 plans simply because it's easier for the attorney to get paid. ProPublica and Atlantic Monthly collaborated on this article. As the author of the article noted, "An entrenched legal culture has made bankruptcy a boon for attorneys while miring clients in a cycle of futility." Finally, and I feel very strongly about this point, there is a possible technology-based solution to some of these financial and conflict of interest concerns. I would encourage the ABI Commission to recommend the use of software-based programs that would permit consumers to file bankruptcy without any need for an attorney or another professional. Just as tax preparation software has revolutionized the tax filing process for low-to-moderate-income consumers, bankruptcy preparation computer programs could provide consumers better and less expensive access to bankruptcy. Thank you for this opportunity to provide my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Lochnean. I'm a partner at Nutter McLennan in Boston. I'm pleased to have Judge Cornreich retired from the District of Maine, currently of counsel at Bernstein Schur, with me. We are both active on the Mediation Committee of ABI. I was the special task force leader this past year, and I'm pleased to say that Judge Cornreich will be my colleague going forward as co-special projects task leader next year. Cornreich will be my colleague going forward as co-special projects task leader next year. Our presentation to the Commission was spurred by Jack Escher, who was formerly involved with the committee, who looked at the list of topics to be considered by the Commission and noted the absence of mediation. As a committee, we gathered together and thought that there was a role for mediation to play in consumer proceedings, and we set upon a process to present some empirical evidence to the Commission about the role of mediation. As you read in our statement, we reached out to districts that have such programs and received tremendous assistance from clerks and sitting judges, retired judges, in pulling together empirical evidence that exists about the effectiveness of such programs in various jurisdictions in the country. I won't get into all the details here. You can certainly read about it in our statement, but I did want to point out a few factors, if possible. Specifically, on page five, we talk about three jurisdictions that provided detailed information. One is the Central District of California, the second is Western District of Pennsylvania, and the third is the Eastern District of Michigan. Mediation programs involving consumer issues have existed in these jurisdictions for a number of years. In the Central District of California, the report indicated that there's been a 63% favorable rating of resolution of the 5,894 matters that have been referred to mediation since the program's inception in 1995. In the Western District of Pennsylvania, there has been a report of 74% resolution of 238 cases that have been sent to mediation since that program's inception. And in the Eastern District of Michigan, a program that existed for 15 years, the report is approximately 70% of consumer matters that have been referred to mediation have resulted in favorable resolution. So from our committee's perspective, it was important not just to come before the Commission and express the benefits of mediation. We wanted to have evidence about how these programs have actually worked in practice in the jurisdictions that have adopted local rules and have had experience with these. And certainly, the experiences that these programs are effective. I think they were effective on a number of levels, and we're going to allocate my time. I wanted to provide some background about our committee's work on this program and how we got to the report, and then we're going to have Judge Cornreich speak for a few minutes about his practical experience, both as a judge and as a mediator, in handling consumer mediations. So for me to round up my couple of minutes before the Commission here, I just wanted to emphasize that there's obviously a benefit to the litigants in getting a matter resolved. It doesn't always happen that something that goes to mediation ends up in a resolution, but when it does end up in a resolution, that's obviously a favorable outcome. When there's no resolution, there's still an ability for a party to have its, quote-unquote, "day in court," even though it's not a day in court. For the litigants, it may seem like a day in court. They get to express their frustration, or their point of view, or their perspective of the facts to a party that is a neutral, that is listening and trying to facilitate some sort of resolution. So there's definitely a benefit to the system in having litigants feel like they've had a shake to get a result. I think there's obviously a benefit to the judicial system in lowering the number of active cases that are on the docket that can be resolved through mediation. Finally, all of these programs involve a component of pro bono service for any mediator that might want to be listed on a registry. There's some expectation that some component of their time would be used to be available on a pro bono basis. So there's benefit even in training of younger or newer lawyers in terms of getting experience with mediation in that setting as well. So the specific recommendation that we have is outlined in the report. We think that the Commission should take note of the effectiveness of these programs that have existed in various jurisdictions and consider ways to promote the use of mediation in consumer matters along the lines that have been successful in other jurisdictions. Judge Cornreich?
Thank you. My role here is first to support John and the committee report on the value of mediation and on the objective evidence that we've been able to gather to demonstrate the effectiveness of mediation. I also want to mention that the role of private mediators, non-judicial mediators, is extremely important, and encouraging pro bono work in mediation registries and local training for mediators is very important. But my remarks are going to be limited and focused, and they will be non-empirical. They're going to be very subjective. My remarks are contained at page seven of our report, and they deal exclusively with my experience as a judicial mediator in consumer matters. I think that we were successful, first, because of the skill set of the judicial mediators, which means that if judges are to engage in mediation, and we think that judges have a role in mediation, they should be well-trained. Secondly, the voluntariness of the program. In some jurisdictions, the courts under the rules will mandate mediation. Whether mediation is mandated or voluntary, we believe that it can be effective, and where it is not mandatory, we believe that the bench should, when the occasion presents itself, encourage the parties to mediate. Third, there are cost advantages to judicial mediation. There's no fee involved, the space is provided, and judges are often willing to serve in this capacity. Fourth, there is an understanding, on and off the bench, that not all cases can be resolved successfully through litigation. There are very troublesome cases where the lawyers need a helping hand, where the parties need a helping hand, and a non-trial judge sitting in the room with the parties who's willing to listen and give parties and counsel an opportunity to be heard in an informal setting can lead to a resolution in a case which may come closer to justice than a judgment. And lastly, the role of the judge as educator in the setting that I just described. Judges can educate without giving legal advice, and sometimes this education will help attorneys who don't have a broad background in bankruptcy and will surely help the parties to understand difficult concepts which are counterintuitive, like a preference case, a small businessperson wondering, "Why do I have to give back money that I earned in the marketplace?" And others, understanding that discharge and dischargeability are concepts that are very, very difficult even for the bar and the bench to understand. So there is a role for judges in mediation, and we think that the Commission should encourage that role. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Before we turn to questions, I wanted to note for the folks who are here that all the reports that are referenced and the testimony are available on the Commission's website, which is at consumercommission ABI.org. So you can look up the reports that are referenced.
All right. We've got some opportunity for questions. Anyone on the panel?
Just to Mr. Lochnean and former Judge Cornright, I think everybody here would agree that we should encourage the use of mediations in consumer cases, but I do have some concerns about how you implement these. And you use the Central District program as an example, and it's a, they're very proud of their mediation program. But when I was taking adversary proceedings in 100-case batches on workload equalization down in Central District, I found that their mix of cases was very different from what we had in Portland. 90% of the cases I was looking at in Central District were credit card, exception discharge cases. And I was wondering, well, why is this so different? Because I saw, under Ninth Circuit standard, it's very difficult to get a judgment on a credit card case, and we see hardly any of them in Oregon. The mediation program was looked at as a wonderful way for creditors to get something, whereas they would virtually not get anything if they had litigated to conclusion. So there were lots of cases brought in Central District, so you'd get them into mediation, and the debtor would agree to pay a few dollars to get the case resolved. When I went down for my trial week in Riverside, most of the cases that were unresolved were credit card cases, and at the final pre-trial conference, none of the plaintiff parties showed up. They didn't want to put any money or real attorney time into them. They didn't come. What they wanted was to file the case, get in the mediation program, get some dollars, and go away.
May I? Yeah. One of the difficulties with formalizing a mediation program is that it becomes another stage of litigation or pseudo-litigation. Let me make a weak analogy. The rules of discovery were intended to inform competing adversaries, and the rules of discovery have evolved into a source of litigation on the way to trial. Mediation can be formalized to such a point where it becomes an obstacle. We've looked at, for instance, domestic relations divorce mediation and mandatory rules in many jurisdictions, and small claims mediation, and these are processes that you have to pass through before you get to court. We are not advocating any specific program. Our materials are to describe programs that are out there that we see as successful. What we hope is that the Commission will encourage each district and each circuit to examine the programs that are out there and find one that fits. It may fit in the Central District, but it may not fit in Portland, Oregon. And I've had cross-district experience, like you have, Judge Donin, and I know that there are experiences in different places. We don't want mediation to be used as a weapon, and it can be weaponized. We'd like it to be used as a peacemaking tool. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's the best I can do.
I have a question for Judge Brown. The caution that you urged the Commission to exercise in dealing with remote access to the bankruptcy system, you caveated by saying in some situations that's going to be the best available option for debtors. And my question is, to what extent are the problems in representation that you, Mr. McMichael, Ms. Townsend, pointed out, problems with individual lawyers or problems with an electronic format?
There's a couple of questions in there, Judge Rudolph, but let me start by saying that I think there's a very significant difference between a law firm that sets itself up intending to do exclusively or primarily remote lawyering around the country with inadequate resources, less-than competent attorneys doing the lawyering, and insufficient actual client contact, on the one hand, being called remote lawyering, and on the other hand, being someplace, for example, like Vermont, where we actually don't have this happen, but I could imagine it happening, where a debtor lives in some remote corner, perhaps the Northeast Kingdom of Vermont, and there are no competent debtors' attorneys there, and so they hire an attorney who is in Burlington or Rutland several hours away, and most of their contact is done by Skype or FaceTime or something like that. Those are extremely different circumstances, in my opinion, and I think what we're concerned about is making sure that if the lawyering is going to happen remotely, all protections that we can come up with are in place to ensure that it's happening because the debtor is choosing to file bankruptcy and needs an attorney, and the attorney who is competent and has experience in that district happens to be too far away for the debtor and the attorney to meet maybe more than once at the 341 meeting. So it's what's driving it. I'm concerned, and we're seeing some, I think, bad lawyering by these entities in the first category who are set up to make money as opposed to represent debtors.
Again, my question, though, is, is the primary problem that you're talking about one of the quality and ethical conduct of the attorney on one hand versus the mode of interaction with the client on the other? I believe the problems that Ms. Townsend was talking about were all local firms. They were not people who were engaged in electronic connection with their clients. So if an attorney is acting competently and ethically in the remote service arena, can they not be just as effective as someone who is operating on a face-to-face basis?
Of course. They can.
Could I ask Judge Brown an additional question, really to any of the panelists? Do you think that the bankruptcy courts have adequate tools available to address repetitive or systemic abuse of the bankruptcy system by attorneys or other parties?
I don't think they do at the present time. I mean, I think there have been a number of issues, as I alluded to earlier, where, you know, Section 105 and the inherent powers of the court is mostly all we have to rely on, and that's often found to be insufficient. And I think there are differences among the circuits, but I think as a general rule, our tools are extremely limited and weak, and we're focused, just by the nature of our system, you know, on a case-by-case sort of analysis. And unless, you know, a judge sees more or less identical misconduct or incompetence in multiple cases and can somehow bring them under the umbrella of, you know, one firm or one attorney, there isn't a good tool for us to look at that systemic problem.
So what tools would you like?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how it would be framed. Certainly, an ideal tool would be a statute, you know, something in the bankruptcy code that says that the bankruptcy judges have specific authority to address conduct which is in violation of the bankruptcy code, the bankruptcy rules, and dangerous and systemically harmful, and perhaps lay out the criteria that the bankruptcy judges would need to follow in determining what protections and notice would need to be involved in the hearings, how sanctions should be computed, you know, just providing sufficient guidance that the bankruptcy courts would at least have a sort of carve-out, which currently, you know, is not there. I mean, I think there are a number of decisions which essentially say that if you want to get into that sort of sanctioning, then you're talking about having the matter be sent to the district court, and that's got its own set of issues.
One point that I wanted to make as an alternative is what's been adopted by the district court in the Northern District of Illinois, which is to delegate to the bankruptcy court the authority to convene and to prosecute violations of the local ethical rules. So the rules that are made as part of the local rules applicable to attorneys in the Northern District of Illinois can be enforced by the bankruptcy court. And in fact, the bankruptcy court has, using those rules, removed a practitioner from practice before the court. Is that something you think would be helpful?
I think it could be. I'm not sure that there's a way of mandating that on a national basis, and I think, right, but I think part of the issue here is having uniformity. I mean, as we heard in the prior panel, I mean, I think having a procedure that would apply in all districts would be much more helpful, because otherwise, there's a risk, I think, that people who may be operating at somewhat lower standards could pick and choose which districts they want to operate in based on the caliber of authority and scope of authority that that particular bankruptcy court has in that district. And just as a general rule, I mean, I think, as I know you agree, having uniform forms and practices does help the law evolve more effectively and efficiently, and particularly if we're talking about national-- And particularly, if we're talking about national practice issues, having some national standards seems pretty critical.
I had a question for Judge Brown and perhaps Ms. Townsend as well. What do you think is driving, the driving force behind the bad behavior that you've
Well, I think as all of us in different ways, or the three of us at least, in different ways have talked about, you know, it's driven by money. I think for many reasons, you know, the bankruptcy consumer caseload is generally declined, and debtors' attorneys are having a harder time, perhaps, making a living. And so people who have been very competent and experienced bankruptcy attorneys are sometimes finding different areas in which to practice law. And so the gap is being filled by these remote practitioners. And I also think that, you know, while the internet is a wonderful resource, you know, it is also, for many people, their primary interaction with, you know, finding anything, whether it's a plumber, or a new car, or an attorney. And so, you know, attorneys who are driven to do quantity versus quality are the people who, you know, vulnerable individuals may find on the internet to represent them.
Do the courts have any role in that? And my point being that you usually get what you pay for, and that if the amount of fees that are allowed by the bankruptcy courts is low, you're going to get a lower quality of person that's attracted to that practice. And it's not just the debtor side, because it's, I do creditor work, and I see it's reflected on the mills that the creditor side has, and they're relatively equal. Our firm does a lot of stuff when the creditors' lawyers make problems for our clients, and we see that on a regular basis. And I'm just thinking that, you know, maybe there's something that needs to be done to allow debtors' lawyers to make more money.
I don't think that the fees have gone down, though, that have been allowed. I mean, you know, may see something different. But I have to say, I absolutely, like, cringe when I hear the word "no-look fee." We look. They are...
Fine point, Judge.
I mean, I am insistent. We have presumed reasonable fees. There's a rebuttable presumption. They are not no-look fees. We look at all of them, and I rely heavily on the trustees, and we have fabulous Chapter 7 and 13 trustees in Vermont, who will bring it to my attention that even though a particular attorney took a fee that is within the presumed reasonable fee that's allowed, they haven't earned it, you know, and they come forward. So I don't know, you may be right, but I think it has more to do with the quantity of work available than the fees that are being allowed, is my perception.
What I would add is that I kind of see this from two sides. On the one hand, we have some law firms in my district that have been around for a very long time, and Judge Brown is completely correct. I mean, for a few years, I was getting about 650 new cases every month. Well, 350 to 400 versus 650 is a big change. So some of these firms, from what I am kind of seeing, is that they've put themselves into situations where maybe they've had to let some employees go. And, you know, over time, that affects the quality of representation. The other thing that we are seeing some is that immediately after the new plan came into, we opted out, just like everybody else almost did. What we're seeing is that even the existing lawyers, the fee went up immediately because we don't have, whatever you want to call it, we don't have a presumptive fee. And the fee has gone up because of service issues and that sort of thing. So we're looking at that. My personal concern in that regard is that, two things. Well, one, I don't want the debtor bar to price out Chapter 13. It scares me, because I think Chapter 13 is a wonderful, effective tool. I wouldn't have done this for the last 15 years if I didn't believe that. And I also don't want to see situations where new lawyers are coming into the practice with no understanding of the law, no understanding of the rules, but hey, you know, my friend that I went to law school with is now getting, you know, $5,500 to $6,000 for a case that doesn't have a house or a car in it hardly. So those are some concerns that we have. Like I said, in my office, I have four staff attorneys, and we spend a significant amount of time just trying to make sure that each law firm is, you know, performing to the level of the fee that they have requested. And the other thing, we were talking about tools, as far as trying to increase the, you know, level of proficiency in the community. I feel like that if we do relook, take another look at the whatever presumptive fee, no-look fee, I do think, in the long run, that that might be beneficial. One of my colleagues suggested maybe some revisions to 2016, just giving the judges a little bit more authority, basically what Judge Brown was saying as well, not making them rely on 105. It is very difficult, in my view, if I were on the bench, to take an individual case. You might say, okay, they didn't perform in this case, you're going to return part of your fee. But you're not, the judge is not going to tell them, I'm entering an order barring you from filing cases for six months, unless there is a real problem. And I understand that. We make referrals to the United States Trustee Program all the time on individual cases, but we also make referrals when we see systemically that an attorney is not performing and is not either filing the Rule 2016B statement, or they are getting a lot of money upfront and are not prosecuting cases.
I wanted to ask Mr. McMichael about the software idea. Are you suggesting a private market solution, or that the courts write this software?
Well, what I had in mind in my statement was something analogous to TurboTax. So a private company that a certain category or universe of debtor who does not have a really complex financial situation could use and file a petition, really, without much need for, you know, involvement by an attorney or petition preparer.
How much change would that require in the bankruptcy code? I mean, you talked about levels of discretion, and levels of discretion are an anathema to such programs. I mean, is that even realistic now?
Well, I actually see, well, first, I would say, I'm not quite sure the AI technology is quite there yet, but I think we're close. That's what I get the sense of. But once you're at the point where something can be automated and systematized in that way, I actually think, remember, the problem with discretion is the lack of predictable result. And if you...
I reject that, by the way. But go ahead. I mean, the problem with Brightline rules is that you don't do justice.
It's a trade-off. But if you want predictability, I think an automated system can be more predictable. Because if the coders code it correctly and the program is written correctly, there's not as much opportunity for human error. There will always be a universe of debtors that require the human touch. But there should be some universe, presumably low-income people without much complexity to their financial situation.
Are you familiar with the UK system at all?
A little bit, but not...
I mean, would a system like that be more amenable to what you're thinking about?
You know, I don't know enough about the UK system to be able to say. I can say the UK system, if I remember what I learned about it when I worked for Congress, in the personal bankruptcy context, I mean, there's sort of like the equivalent of a trustee who kind of gets assigned to each case, and they make sort of decisions.
There are different, I mean, what I'm thinking about, there are different levels, and there's a whole class of individuals who, they file administratively, I mean, they have to have a certain lower level of debt, but if no one complains, basically, in a year, they're out. There's very little discretion at that level.
May I make one comment in the Chapter 13 context? I hadn't really considered your question until just then, but I think it's pretty much well-known that less than 1% of Chapter 13 debtors who file pro se even get their plan confirmed, let alone go to completion. What the result right now is, and in some places, in Atlanta, gosh, I want to say, maybe 15 to 20% of the cases are filed pro se because it's a nonjudicial foreclosure state, and they've just bought themselves several months. What they've also done is create huge headaches for the trustees and for the bench. And some of these litigants are debtors, they really want to be litigants.
Recreational litigants.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, I had one guy write me a letter recently. He goes, "I have a lot of time on my hands, and I am not going anywhere." They create a lot of problems for the whole system. And, you know, I think the overwhelming majority of debtors in Chapter 13 cases do need and require legal assistance.
But doesn't that get to the cost of the attorney? And if there was a mechanism for them to hire a good lawyer rather than filing pro se themselves or on an emergency basis, but have some mechanism to pay them after filing, like you would buy something on an installment plan, right?
For the most part, they do.
You can get a good lawyer if you don't have your money upfront.
Well, the overwhelming majority of cases in the Northern District of Georgia have almost no fees paid prepetition. And I pay, my office and Ms. Whaley and Ms. Navy, we pay the fee through the plan.
I have one question about fees. When you say...
This is the last question.
I got it twice.
One of his short questions.
When you say that you look at each fee application, are those fee applications done on an hourly basis, or are they done on a flat fee for representation for the whole case?
There are different options. The overwhelming majority of the cases, there is no fee application. It's just included in the plan, the amount. So when I go to the meeting of creditors, obviously, I've looked at the case, but I don't know if they stop for garnishments. I may think that this case is not worthy of this fee, and then after I email them and talk to them on the phone, I'll get an explanation, then I'll say, you know what, I'm going to let this go.
But the critical thing is, it is a single-dollar amount, basically, for representation of the case, not an hourly basis.
For the most part, in my district, that's correct.
But also, in your district, it's a single fee for the entire case. It's not an unbundled fee.
Well, not necessarily, Judge. In the last few years, a lot more of the law firms have charged the set fee, and they're permitted to do this under our general order. And then in addition, they have an à la carte menu for a lot of post-petition matters, which really, honestly, ends up potentially costing a lot of money.
And can I just add to this answer? The other piece of this is even though there are many districts, including Vermont, where it is a flat fee that the attorney is charging, the attorneys, I think, know, certainly in Vermont, that they need to be keeping timesheets. Because if the trustee comes forward and says, "I object to the amount of this fee, the attorney has not done enough work," the attorney will be called upon to defend the fee, and they are going to be much more likely to succeed and much more likely to get more of their fee if they can actually show timesheets. So I think that there are a lot of attorneys who are actually keeping timesheets, even if they're not doing fee applications.
Well, the fact that we've kept you here a few minutes longer shows how simple all these are. We genuinely appreciate all of you coming and the audience coming to participate as well. Thank you very much.